Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 28, 2021 School Committee Meeting. It's being recorded on SMAC to be viewed at a future time. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. We have a full room tonight. All right, so we don't have anybody signed up for public comment. So first we'll go with interim Superintendent Ford. Would you like to give an update?
Sure, then. Thank you. First and foremost, the Commissioner has extended the mask requirement through at least November 1st. I don't actually think that's going to change anytime soon. The other piece that did come out is as of October 15th, any school where you have at least eighty percent of your faculty, staff, and students vaccinated, you can actually apply to the department now and ask to have those individuals who are vaccinated not wear masks at school.
That's high school and middle school, right?
Well, in most cases, it's just going to be a high school because the middle schools have sixth grade and sixth grade. You'll never get the numbers. I mean, we're not at that point yet in Stoughton. But hopefully, as, as things move along and we move further into the year and we see the vaccination rate continue to creep up, we can get to that eighty percent. Pool testing, we have pushed that back. We, we work with a company called CIC, which is the company contracted out by the Department of Education. We just got our third testing coordinator, which I'm hoping will be our, our coordinator for the rest of this year. And we have been assigned a partner, which is Veritas Labs, to conduct the testing. We're hoping that on the 6th, we actually start with the pool testing so we can get a good idea of where we're at in terms of, of the prevalence, potential prevalence of the virus in our students. Overall, I mean, we haven't, I don't think we're actually seeing it to the degree that would be concerning at this point. One of the things that we are, we are going to make a change is we initially talked about doing the saliva testing. And based on the feedback that we've received from other school districts and talking with the new company, we think we're actually going to go in a different direction. In fact, I can say we're going to go in a different direction, which is the nasal swab that kids take home and they'll do it the night before, then bring it into school. And logistically for us, I mean, it's a lot less manpower intensive and seems like a much better route for us. It also still allows us to do not only the pool testing, but the secondary testing of the pool that the lab can conduct on their own, so we're not required to do the, the in-house binocs testing for those individuals.
I assume with a nasal swab, parents can assist and there'll be instructions.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about the brain busting swab at the beginning of the pandemic. We're actually just a light swab around the interior of the nose.
Okay.
So yeah, it's, it's a much nicer route than what I, what I think people associate with the nasal swab at this point. So also, you know, we have been conducting test and stay. This is something that we're hoping that our, the Veritas Lab will be able to do for us, to lighten the load on our nurses. But until that comes online, the nurses are in fact doing the test and stay protocol, which has been incredibly beneficial at keeping kids from, from being required to quarantine, keeping them in school, and minimize the number of kids that are learning online because we know that learning in person is absolutely better than learning online. So we have had the numbers go up. I think we brought up to twenty-five students at one point, which strains the system for an individual school, but, but you know, you bend, but you don't break. And the nursing staff has done a phenomenal job keeping everybody in school and finding a way to make it happen, even with all the other tasks they have to accomplish at the beginning of the school year.
So is the Veritas Lab, is that a charge to the district?
No, it's all covered by the state.
So if they, they'll, if they can take on the test and stay, it won't, that's something they'll do in addition to?
So when, when they initially, when we initially applied for assistance, we applied for everything. So ideally, they're going to come in and they'll do the pool testing component, collect the samples from us, test the samples. Once they find a, a pool that comes up positive, break out the kids in that pool and determine specifically who, who is, who has COVID. The second piece that they should be assisting with us is the test and stay, so come in and conduct that testing in the morning so that we don't have to take on that logistical hurdle and that, because there's a huge manpower requirement that's associated with it. Now, it's absolutely worth doing. We have the capacity to do it ourselves, but it would be better if we received some assistance. So ideally, once CIC and Veritas gets their, gets everything lined up, we'll be receiving that additional support at no cost to the district.
Nice.
All right. So, so with regard to the budget, we currently have the budget scaffolded. We're at a point where we've calculated all the contractual increases. We've looked at adding other things like additional busing things we've already talked about, additional support in terms of residency determinations and like security at our, at our buildings at a high school. The other pieces that we're looking to do, which begin on October 13th, is bringing all the principals, directors, and everybody that has responsibility for a specific area within the district so we can go through what their budget looks like. We're looking at level service this year so we can come through and look, we have to make any minor adjustments in terms of staffing or in terms of material support so that we have a full developed draft budget due at the October 26 meeting. The nice thing about the current timeline is Dr. Rob will be in the district and he'll take part of the entire process. So within a month of having a new superintendent at the helm, he should have a very good idea of what we look like in terms of our budget allocation of funds. And also in terms, you know, the budget does tell a story about what the school district values. You know, you get to have that, that budgetary lens in terms of where we put our resources in the programs that mean something to this community. So one month in, having that particular piece in place, I think, is a tremendous asset to the district and our new superintendent. So the other thing is we have had an increase in issues related to vandalism recently. And, you know, we saw it at the high school, we saw it at the middle school. And a lot of this, we believe, can be attributed to some trends we're seeing in TikTok and Snapchat where students will go ahead and they'll, they'll vandalize something or steal something, then post it up for feedback or for TikTok fame or whatever it is. This is something I think our middle school and high school principal are, are addressing effectively. One of the things that Ms. Miller is going to do is send out a newsletter to parents and letting them know what we're seeing, what we're encountering, and potentially some of these trends that you might want to look out for as a parent that, that absolutely would not be good for your, for your kids or our students to participate in. So she's going to put something out over the next day or so, just as an update to parents as to where we're at. The other thing is we are conducting the residency verification process. We don't want to surprise parents when they get a letter and we ask them to reestablish residency. But that is going to go out on October 1st and it's going to go out to five percent of our families. So roughly one in twenty families is going to be asked to resubmit their, their residency documentation. People should know this is a requirement of our district residency policy, so this just isn't the principal sending something out looking for information for whatever reason. And I do want to thank people in advance for their anticipated cooperation with this because you are going to have to go through the process of finding, you know, the documentation necessary to reestablish residency, send it into the schools. You know, it's, it can be a little bit of a hassle for people. But I also want to thank the principals because whereas parents are going to have to put in a small amount of time, the principals are going to put in an extraordinary amount of time to make this happen on top of everything else they're doing to keep their schools open and run effectively, given the circumstances which we're still within. So that's all going to be kicking off soon. And on a final note, this last week, the Wilkins Elementary did lose a beloved member of their faculty, Ms. Hillary Pike. She, I mean, she was a wonderful person and she was an outstanding educator. And she will truly be missed at the Wilkins, that school community, and as part of our, our district literacy team. So it's, it was a tough loss for that school and, you know, there's, she was just a wonderful person. In lieu of services, her family is having a celebration of life this coming Thursday at the Lakeside Villa in Halifax, Mass. It's going to go from four to eight PM. If people want to attend, and if you didn't get the information ready, you could just contact the principal, contact me. And we're anticipating a very strong turnout from the district, just to express our condolences to that family. So, and that's, that's the update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ford. Does anybody have any questions for him?
No questions, but I do want to say that I did receive a email from Ms. Miller regarding what you were speaking about.
So thank you for that update. I think that you can now breathe a sigh of relief given the fact that this is your last week as interim superintendent and you will not have to do that again. Unless Dr. Rob is on vacation and then you're here.
I look forward to doing it again, but I absolutely look forward to Dr. Rob taking the reins and, and taking, steering the ship and being here for you every week.
Well, you still have a few more days. Let's not get too. But we, we, we are so appreciative of everything that you've done and all the hard work you've done and giving us very detailed updates at these meetings and to the families and sending out communications, et cetera. So we really do appreciate everything that you've done for the Stone Public School District.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a question pertaining to the, the vaccination and the pool testing that you're saying will be sent out to the students. Are we validating it or have we not gotten there yet, basically? How do we make sure that the kids are vaccinated and they're not fake vaccine?
Oh, so, so with vaccination, I mean, there's a number of ways of doing it, but we have access to that database. So if we wanted to make a determination whether somebody's vaccinated or not, I mean, we can do it. We just have to keep the information confidential and within the, the circle of the Health Services Department.
Same thing with the at-home testing and stuff like that.
So the at-home piece, a parent would, would sign up for the pool testing and they would consent to everything that goes with it. And what'll end up happening with the system that we're looking at right now is we would just send home the test kit the night before. They would bring it back the next day. Then we would code it in the system here so it can be tracked. And then it would go to the labs, they would run the, the whole analysis of it as a pool. And then if, if one of the, one of the pools came apart, they would just pull the individual samples out with whatever they have left and then test all the individual samples.
Okay.
That prevents our nursing team from having to actually do the binocs testing the next day. So logistically, it's, it's incredibly advantageous for us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Interim Superintendent.
Yes, temporarily interim.
Just going to keep saying interim. He's going to be so happy Friday at, I don't know what time. You've been leaving very late these past few months, so. Anyway, moving on to new business, we have the school nurse appointments. If Ms. Allen would like to come up to the microphone and bring, I am going to say your last name. Ashley Santos, hold on, Santasbago?
Santasbago.
Santasbago.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's easier than it looks.
It actually is now that I know what it is, Santasbago. Would you mind coming up as well?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm, Mrs. Hill and I had the pleasure, sorry, it's been a long week, our, it's only Tuesday. We had the pleasure of interviewing a number of candidates for the district nurse position, which is a position to support all eight of our schools. Ashley is joining us from Quincy Public Schools. She has a, of ten years of nursing experience. That includes community pediatric care, corrections, and school nursing. She is a master's educated RN and.
It's awesome.
We're very excited.
We're super excited. We were able to, we got your resume, so we were able to look through that. And obviously, Anita had the pleasure of, she's, she's always our interviewee, interviewer for many different things, so we laugh at her because, right, yeah.
I wanted to apologize to Ashley because I, I had, I had to interview her from work because I had to stay at work. And I didn't have a, a laptop with a camera, so I had to do it by phone, so I'm the ma, I'm the masked person.
Do you want to say anything?
Um, all I can say is I was very impressed with Ashley and I'm so glad that you've accepted and we look forward to working with you and, and helping Danielle out and all the rest of our great nurses.
I'm excited. I'm excited to be part of this team.
That's wonderful. Anybody have any questions they'd like to ask? I do not as well.
Make a motion. We appoint Ashley Santasbago to the nursing position. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wonderful. Congratulations, Ashley.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. We're excited to have you. Thank you. And drive safe.
Yes.
Maureen Durgan? I got that right? Hi, welcome, Maureen.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And Mrs. Hill has been amazing in the search for the Givens School permanent subposition, which is to fill a vacancy for one of our nurses who's on leave this year. Maureen has twenty years' experience. That includes inpatient, long-term, and school nursing. She's also a master's level educated nurse. And she loves the little people, so I'm so excited that, you know, there's this opportunity in such a wonderful elementary school for such a wonderful human being.
That's wonderful.
I just wanted to add to it. I did get to see Maureen because I was at home doing it the right, the right way, the, the Google meets. Maureen is very, she seems very energetic and like Danielle said, very empathetic and challenge, and can't wait to get with the little one, the little ones. So that's a good fit.
And that's wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Maureen Durgan for the position of a school nurse.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good luck to the both of you. Drive safe.
Yeah, thank you so much.
The next thing on the agenda is the Wayne Aronson Memorial Scholarship Approval. We received, oh, what, Aronson? Yeah, what did I say?
Aronson.
I don't know, my Boston accent, you know, it's, so we have a scholarship letter that we received. Wayne was a, a Stoughton High School graduate, class of nineteen eighty-three. Wayne lived life to the fullest. He cherished his family and friends. He loved his Boston sports. The Patriot, Patriots were his favorite. His life was cut short at the young age of forty-three due to complications related to scleroderma while waiting for a lung transplant. Do you want to finish it?
There will be two recipients, one five hundred dollars and one two hundred and fifty dollars. The criteria, the scholarships will be awarded to an SHS student, hockey player who displays characteristics of sportsmanship and embraces a positive attitude on and off the ice, a team player. Each recipient will attend a two- or four-year college or other higher education program. And there will be an essay, essay, excuse me, a paragraph or two on what receiving this scholarship in Wayne's name would mean to you. SHS Scholarship Committee will choose the recipient and SHS will disperse checks to the students directly.
I just read that for the first time. My mother had scleroderma, so I'm sorry I get choked up. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Wayne Aronson Memorial Scholarship.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Wonderful. Okay, so now we have a presentation for the special education program. Carol Anne Sampson, welcome. Come on up. Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
So I made some notes. I wanted to cover all the major areas. So I didn't know if you wanted me to stop in between or just wait to the end and then you can, I'll, I'll field any questions that you have and hopefully have the answers tonight. So I, I wanted to start in, hi. We haven't met yet. Very nice to meet you. I just wanted to start with going back to the, this previous summer, our ESY program and how many students that we serviced. So in our preschool self-contained classes, we had forty-five students. And then we had twenty students that participated in itinerant services. In our overall programs for the other grades, we had eighty students that attended our five-week program and we had a hundred and ten students that received itinerant services. So that could be your OT speech, the academic services. The majority was done in person, following all our precautionary measures. And we also were able to provide some students with the itinerant services remotely for students whose parents did not feel comfortable having their students attend in person. Next summer, we want to have an additional classroom for our, our high school students that are in our substantially separate programs. And also, one of the things that we've been doing over the past few summers has worked out wonderfully. And each year, we start adding more, we add more and more students. So you're all familiar with Linda Feeney and her Nights of Summer program, which is a huge success. So for, prior to the summer, we meet with Linda with, and staff recommendations for students that they feel would benefit from participating in the Nights program. And what we do on the special education side is provide support for the students in the programs. And then we work on the scheduling, any of the additional services that they might need, such as if they're in a reading program or any itinerant services. So we look forward to having even more students participate this summer. Right now, we have six hundred and seventy-one active IEPs, so students that are in special ed, and just under forty-five students that are out of district. And the number has, continues to go down each year due to the fact that we have so many in-district programs. Next, I want to talk about some of the new things that are in place this year. So we are adding an additional. So we are adding an additional integrated preschool classroom. We're excited, although we miss them, we're excited to have the space downstairs where the student had their program extended day so that we keep our plan and those classrooms, according to Joyce, will be ready to have the students start moving down there after winter break. And that will allow us, we have three classrooms that are our transition classrooms, students that will, that will be attending kindergarten in September, but because of their birth dates, did not, weren't able to go this year. We also added an additional A L C classroom at the Hanson and this allowed us to break down the classroom grades for, so that we have kindergarten first, second and third, and fourth and fifth, fifth grade. We started our, our transition program for, at the high school for students that do not qualify to graduate and need extended services. So we did a lot of work over the summer and we continue to work with the, with the curriculum department to provide the students, some that are still trying to pass their M C A S as well as bring in the vocational components. And right now, we have eight students with more students expected to join the program at the end of the school year. We added an additional District B C B A and the, the two ladies that are our District B C B As have been off and running from the moment their feet hit the ground on day one to support the, all over the district, support students and teachers and as well as the administration. We have a new preschool, preschool out of district and early childhood coordinator. So she's been with us. She started a week ago Friday and that was funded through one of our grants. This is not under special education, but it, it benefits some of our students. We have the Bright program that started at the, at Stoughton High School for students that, um, if you're not familiar with the Bright program, it's students that have been hospitalized and are ready to transition back, but it allows them a, a small setting while they slowly start getting back into the, you know, the routine of going to school and going to their classes. We also were able to, we have had two speech therapists in the district that were point eight, that are now full-time. One is at the Daw and the other at the Hanson. We were excited to also be able to finalize the para contract, so now we have four levels. Just a few more. There's a, there's a lot and I just didn't, when I, when I met with Dr. Rab, like, once I started, I felt like I was just going on and on and on. But he was very good listening. The, so our C P A C is up and running. We have four ladies that have taken over the roles. So we've been in contact to set up our, we, it's not out yet, but we will be setting up our first meeting in October for the base, parents' basic rights. And we've also been able to partner with Bridgewater State University. One of the professors there in the special ed depart, department reached out, which was wonderful because she wants to work with our district and other local districts in providing guest speakers and all different, different workshops for parents. So we're very excited about that. We switched over, this is our third year with our Power School, the special programs component. We transitioned from East Bed and we are, are excited that in, we're in, um, the fourth, the fourth quadrant of the rollout, but after December, we will be able to do what, what we call DocuSign. It's a different name, but that way it'll really help with getting the documents to parents. They can sign it electronically. It'll cut back on a lot of the paper that we do and it'll be easier for parents to access any information if we need to resend anything. We do a program evaluation each year. Last year, we, we contracted with Accept Collaborative to come in and do an evaluation on our A L C programs. So our alternative learning centers, that was done through the programs, the continuation of the programs through the Hanson and at the middle school. From there, we're in the process right now of putting together, we, actually, we appointed a, a group of, of staff members to be the, on the A L C task, task force so that we can move forward with implementing a lot of the suggestions that, that were given. And this year, the focus will be on the preschool. I had, uh, two meetings over the last two weeks with families that have students that are homeschooled. And the, the two, two of the main purposes is, the first one is child find, so identifying, um, so I set up Google meets and we identified three students through those meetings that who, that are looking for their, their child to be tested in areas, different areas. And then the other is, um, when we do one of our grants, it's called proportionate share. We take a, a, there's a, a calculation feature of it and you take a, a portion of that money to provide services to students. If they were in a private school, where we don't have private schools in our town, that money is focused on the, the students that are homeschooled. And so I have a, a follow-up meeting with parents that had some ideas of what they could do to supplement their homeschool programming. Um, let's see, our P D, we had a, a great P D the, last Thursday. We have, um, P D for all of our paraprofessionals.
Did they come?
They, every single one of them came, uh, well, like, one had an eye. Yeah, in the past, it's, yes, in the past, it's been a challenge. We had, uh, there was sixty-five. And the ones, some that didn't, there was certain reasons behind that. Our website continues to be up and running and updated and thank you, Jeff. Um, I sent him information to put on there. Our, so our special ed website, you can access just by going on the Stoughton Public Schools' main website or you can go on to your child's, uh, school website and you'll see that when you click on the special education site, it, it'll bring you right to our main website. Okay, and I think in, just a few fun things, um, we, we have somebody new. One of the high school teachers is taking over our buddies' club, which I always refer to as the Tom Brady's Club because he does the commercials with the bike riding. Uh, so we're, we're very excited to get back up and running again. We also had a teacher that reached out to us, reached out to me about starting a unified sports team. And so I put her in contact with Ryan Donahue because the athletic director in the town needs to be involved as well. So that's in the works as well. We're unfortunately one of the only towns around that doesn't have, have a program, so we're looking to get that going. Okay, all right, so I think I hit all my major, my major areas.
I just have a quick, small question. Um, you mentioned that, uh, something about the transitional program for the high school seniors that aren't going to be able to graduate. Do we have a, a, an established transitional program for, for that or, or is it still in progress or?
Nope, we have, um, we've been, work, we, the, the teacher that is running that program now is, also was one of our, um, teachers at the high school, special education. She went through, um, the program through the Department of Ed or D E C, a transition program that over the last at least year and a half of how to establish a program. And all, she's, we've also been working over the summer on developing the actual curriculum. So the students have courses in place, they all have schedules. And we also are continuing our, our, um, involvement with some of the community programs such as the House of Possibilities and, and Triangle. Uh, the, one of the main goals of the program is for the students that do remain with us at twenty-two, that the students and their families are already established in one of the community programs. So when they turn twenty-two, adult services will, will take rate over. So there's not a big gap in between. There's, there's a lot to, for families to do to get established. So this is really going to help bridge, bridge students into the programs.
The reason I ask is, not that I, I want to foster pirate, pirating other places' programs, but I'm, I'm the rep on Pilgrim Area Collaborative. And I know they have a transitional program. And I was, I don't know what it would be involved in to collaborate or, and/or abscond with some of their, the, the outline that they have.
And I appreciate for saying that. We actually do have connections with Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Um, on, one of, one of my special ed director groups is through Pilgrim Area Collaborative and the, and the towns there.
They have great programs over there. I mean, I know we, we love our in-house, but they really do have great programs.
And our, our B C B As also do a job alike through Pilgrim Area and one of our B C B As used to work for them, so we kind of pulled her. The, but they, she has very good relationships as well.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you so much. Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you.
So a lot of information. Lots of work happening. Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Good night.
Good night.
Oh, Carolyn, you forgot your bag. Although you'll be here tomorrow.
You can tell what kind of day I had by my hair. I came in pretty early.
It was a bad hair day, it was all right, but you know, it's fine.
It started off, off nice and fluffy.
Now she's taking the chair.
Bring the chair with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the public meeting minutes. Does anybody have any?
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
So correspondence, does anybody have any correspondence that they'd like to share, they received?
I have got, um, correspondence in regards to bus stops that I did share with, um, Mr. Ford. And, um, we just want to, um, stress that the bus situation is, is difficult this year and hopefully next year, we can kind of help that with adding some buses on to the budget. Um, so I hope that everyone will support that part. But as of right now, they are doing the best that they can. If you do have, um, issues with your bus stop, you can send an email to the building principal to have it checked out and, um, that way it will go through the, the right, um, chain of demand. And, um, can't say that anything could change, but they do work as hard as they can to try to make sure that, you know, everyone's safe. But that's it, I think.
No, here, uh, any other matters?
No.
The only other matter I have is a, you know, the school committee's website, we have a new website that's up. I'm going to look it up, just so you guys are aware. Mr. Jeffrey Pickett is amazing, um, and worked on it. Um, many changes, um, to it. And so we welcome folks to go on to that and take a peek at it. It's wonderful. We have a new section of the school committee website, which is governance of public education. Um, so we're excited about that piece. It outlines the rules, um, of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the school committee, just for folks to have a better understanding of.
Have a better understanding of how those things work, thank you. And, um, and, you know, we just welcome people to look at that so that way they understand how policy is made, how we have to adhere to certain law. And in addition to that, just want to clear up some confusion that may have, town manager may have had in relation to the hiring, um, in certain positions. The school committee, um, as the local governing body, um, we're responsible for the hiring and supervising of the superintendent. Um, we review and approve the annual budget. We're in charge of that. We establish the educational goals and policies for this district, um, as everyone's aware. And we, we make sure that those, um, policies are consistent with the requirements of master of law that we have to adhere to and the statewide goals and standards that are established by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. So our policies are created based on the trickle effect that comes from Vessi to D E C, et cetera. So I just wanted to state that and I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, the work that we did with hiring the superintendent, we're super excited to have him on board. That is the role of the school committee. It always has been since the, I don't know, beginning of time. Um, and that is our purview and it is a, um, we went out and asked public members if they wanted to participate. We went to fielded that, had members, and we had a committee. That's how it works. We don't invite town manager to that. Um, we, that's our role. Um, so I just want to make it very clear on that and, um, happy to have that discussion with anyone that has confusion about that role. Anyway, um, that's the only other matter that I have and I want to just say this is delicious. Thank you, Vaughn and O'Kean.
Anything else, guys? No other matters? That wraps up the meeting for this evening, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nick, yep.
Aye.
So you say aye?
Yes.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye, captain. So we will see everybody on October twenty-sixth for our next school committee meeting where Dr. Rab will be here and, um, he will be able to help in, um, you know, sharing the agenda. I mean, the budget, um, that we will be bringing forward to town meetings.
Signing.
Yay. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening. Take care.